I'm waiting just another minute. I know that Scott Person was texting me with questions up to just a minute or two ago, so I think he's got to be close by. I didn't get to answer his questions because I was busy trying to get signed on here, but I think he'll be joining us. Okay Scott, just disregard the text I just sent you. I see you popping in there. And it's 7:01 and I would like to call the public hearing to order. And the first thing I'd like to do is we do have a couple of new folks joining us tonight. I don't know who's on everybody else's screen, but Steve Nelson's got the prime spot on mine here. He's our newest member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as of the 1st of July. So he has taken over a seat on the commission that was vacated by Susan England, who has gone off to be an alternate. And we also have Abby Winter with us tonight. And she is going, she is our new board clerk for the land use department. And I'd like to thank Mindy for all the great work that she's done over the last. I don't know how long Mindy's been with us, but she's been here for a little while now and has been doing just an exceptional job. I understand, I think she's living in South Windsor now, so the distance for, if we went back to holding an in-person meeting, might be just a little excessive. And so she resigned. And we got, we got Abby Winters in place to take her. And that was a pretty remarkable quick turnaround. So after we get done with the public hearing and all the official business of the night, I'll let Steve and Abby tell us a little bit about themselves. And I do see a phone number to join us. Is that you with us, Leanne?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The, okay, so we've called the public meeting to order. A couple of things about that is you probably saw when you signed in that the meeting is being recorded. So remember that when you're making your comments. One of the things that I would like to ask is that if members of the public are speaking during the public hearing, or for that matter during the regular meeting, that we get your first and last name. I know when we are keeping the minutes, sometimes it's tough to get those names. And if we were ever apt to get back to you on anything, it's nice to be able to have your full name so we can get ahold of you there. As we do the public hearing, and I don't expect that it will go too long tonight because we primarily, I wanted to hold the hearing open because Jim Halasley was not able to attend the last meeting, wanted to give him a chance to speak down the record. And so we'll give him that chance tonight. But during the public hearing, any of the commission members, including the alternates, can ask whatever questions you want. Once we get into deliberation at the regular meeting, only those people who are actually seated, and I think we've got the full commission here tonight, so our alternates will not be seated. The alternates won't be able to ask questions during the deliberation. Only those people who will vote on the application. So that's a little preliminary. The purpose of the public hearing is... Let me get rid of my diving alarm here. The property known as 26 Old Farm Road, AKA Assessor's Map, 28 Block 7, Lot 6-23. Applicants seeking a special permit for two rear lots in accordance with Section 4.9 of the Andover zoning regulations, and a two-lot open space cluster re-subdivision in accordance with Section 5.5 of the Andover zoning regulations, and Andover subdivision regulations in their entirety. Note as proposed, this re-subdivision is comprised of one lot with access off Old Farms Road, being easement, and one lot accessed off Pine Ridge Drive near the cul-de-sac. So with that, I will give the applicants one last chance if there was anything else that they wanted to discuss with your application before we headed on. Now's your chance, George or Eric.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add is that there has, Andrew Bushnell has another revision to the plans that have just a few of the things that were brought up at the first session of the public hearing. Among them, the town of Coventry, the appearances of the town of Coventry, and a couple other things I can't quite recall off the top of my head, but we have those. Nothing material changed with the plans that were discussed at the last hearing.
Okay.
Last part of the hearing.
Yep, very good. With that, Agent Halsey, is there anything that you would like to get into the public hearing with respect to the application?
No, I've dealt with this application and the applicants for quite some time. It was fairly complicated. Application involved wetlands. And they've addressed my concerns as they've gone. The only outstanding issue that I don't know is though it's been discussed is the drainage structure that is situated off the driveway. And I'm concerned that that be maintained in perpetuity. Towards that end, I did throw a condition in the draft motion that would address that. That's where that came from. Other than that, I've tried to get all the information from the applicant and their engineer. I don't know if the, any, some of the members of the commission are aware of the wetlands process that they went through, but part of it was involved some mitigation, pulling some plants, some invasive species, and planting new plants over the course of time. And that is a condition of the wetlands approval. So it's not being addressed by the Planting and Zoning Commission. That's all I have.
Okay, and with regards to that, Jim, on one of the questions, and I don't know that I put that into the conditions for approval that we were discussing earlier. The, we wanted to make sure that we did not preclude the applicants from removing the invasive plants in the easement area. You know, it talks about not cutting anything down and that sort of thing. We did ask them and they did agree that they were going to remove the barberry that's out there and plant some native plants. So when we get to the point of discussing conditions of approval, please keep me honest and make sure we get that part.
Okay, I think that can be addressed pretty easily.
Yep, very good. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the applicants at this point? And Scott, you had asked me if I had seen this one article of the regs and I was not able to find that before we got online tonight. So if there was a question or something regarding that particular section of the regs, I need some help understanding what that is.
Okay. I don't know, I couldn't find it.
Oh, okay. I thought, yeah, I couldn't find it in there either. Now, what made you come up with that particular number?
When we get to accessory apartments.
Oh, okay, I got you. Yeah, I'm sorry, not this, not this application here. I will, I will take the opportunity to just ask the applicants one additional question from my, you helped me learn, this was, this was the application where I learned all about driveways. But you had a comment in in the notes that you considered the solar application with respect to your development. And I was wondering if you could elaborate on that. I think the regs actually ask, you know, for what you considered in that sort of thing. And I can go, I'll get that particular thing, but I'm just trying to make sure that, I think solar is the wave of the future and we should be encouraging the ability to do that wherever we can.
I think then, George, jump in, feel free. The main thing we're considering this is the orientation of the structures.
Yep.
On one side of the, on a lot closer to Pine Ridge, most likely the broadest face of the building is probably going to be facing south. And we're thinking about that on the other side. But we intend to, we definitely intend to build with solar and, you know, as feasible as it is, given the lot and the trees that are left behind, where we can make things face. You know, there's tax credits and things you can qualify as you build with them. So we intend to take advantage of them.
Okay, thank you. And just for everybody's information here, that Article 7.15 of the subdivision regs says the plan submission for subdivision shall demonstrate to the commission that the applicant is considered in developing a plan using passive and active solar energy techniques, which would not significantly increase the cost of the housing to the buyer after tax credit subsidies and exemptions. And so I think what we're really looking for there is the orientation of the house to take advantage of the sunlight. And if you're doing that, that's all that we would ask for.
Yeah, that is our goal. EverSource has programs that they have available. Some of the programs have a time limit, but programs are always coming and going. And when we do actually start to build, we're going to take advantage of whatever programs are available from EverSource.
Okay. I know, I know you, Eric had mentioned that you corrected some of the administrative items in the application. One of the questions that came up last time was identification on the drawings of the iron pins for the boundary corners and monumentation. Those were not, were not put on the drawings that we've had. So I guess my question is, has the updated drawing been submitted yet? So that to Jim, so that we have access to that? Or is that still in the process of making it his way? And did you get those boundary markings and monuments required by the regulations put in there?
Yeah, so the drawing is in transit, I think. The plans are in transit. They probably have not arrived yet. I don't, I don't think Andrew sent them over. So, you know, we'll get them over shortly, but to answer the second part of the question, we did talk about this, and I think there's on our side a little bit of uncertainty as to whether or not now, like, these need to be on the plans at this moment. One example we discussed is, you know, we don't have approval of the subdivisions, you know, line as of yet. So there's no survey pins there. And we're, you know, so is now the time that's required? Or is it, is it something we would do when we submit as-built as a condition of the, like, the CO?
Agent Halsey, you got any insight on that? I share Eric's question. As I was going through the regs, I know when we're all done, we get the as-built drawings. You know, we expect to have it all done. It let me believe that it would show proposed and existing monumentation. So even though the subdivision isn't approved yet, you could put a proposed monument on the drawing. And then when it gets to be as-built, you would, you'd take proposed off and they would all be existing at that point. Is that how that works, Agent Halsey?
That's fine. They could be on the site plan as proposed. My preference is that they be labeled either existing or proposed. Design professionals sometimes tend to leave that off and it's, you have to guess. So that can be addressed as part of, as part of the site plan, part of the as-built. Not, shouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay.
Well, to take a look at the draft motion and tweak it, perhaps.
The as-built is, is when the foundation is in, the surveyor comes and checked up a corner of the building and puts it on the print. The pins, bins, which there's, there's quite a few on that lot, should be on the print when it's brought to the commission.
They can be on the print, as far as I'm concerned. They can be on the print as proposed. And then the as-built would show that they're, they are installed, that the pins are installed. It's usually done during, typically very done during the construction process.
And the reason for asking the question is, you know, when we get to items like change the notes to reflect Andover instead of Coventry, if that's already been accommodated, we won't put that in a condition of approval just to get that list a little shorter. But if the monumentation, well, now I think we're all a little clearer on how that should work. It would be nice that when the milars get presented for my signature after the subdivision is approved, that it does have existing and proposed monumentation on there. And I would only call your attention to the fact that there needs, there are, there is some monumentation associated with the easements that you have that will clearly define that. So we'll make sure we get that put right in the conditions there. I don't have any other questions for the applicants. And at this time, if there are any members of the public who are online, speak up and we'll hear from you at this point. The fire department letter, was that submitted? I can't remember, Jim.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm just looking through who's, who's here, and I don't see any members of the public and having heard none. I would like, looking for somebody to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Don't move.
Thank you, Scott. Can I have a second on that?
Second it.
Okay. In, with that, all in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your hand so we can see. Well, Leanne, I can't see you raising your hand there, so. I'll have to get a voice vote from Leanne.
I.
Okay, thanks, Leanne. And I didn't, any opposed?
I didn't see it either.
Okay, I see no opposition, so the motion passes 500. And at this point, I would like to call the regular meeting to order at 7:21. Rule call and seating of alternates. I see regular members Anne Creme, Scott Person, Steve Nelson, Leanne Hutchinson, and myself, all present. In addition to Anne Blanchard and Kevin Arnison, present. So neither alternate will be seated. Susan England is absent tonight as an alternate. Item three on the agenda is additions or changes to the agenda. Anybody have any additions or changes? Hearing none. We'll move on to item four, public comment. Anybody from the public that's present that wants to talk on any item other than the subdivision we just had the public hearing on? Hearing none. I'll move down to old business, item 5A. And it's the application of George Korea and Eric and Melissa Lteska, 28 Old Farms Road, AKA Assessor's Map, 28 Block 7, Lot 6-23. Applicant is seeking a special permit for one rear lot, two in total, and two open space cluster subdivisions in accordance with Section 5 of the Andover subdivision regulations in their entirety. At this point, Agent Halsey, do you have any other comments on the application?
No, just for clarity, there was a rear lot approved years ago. So at this point, they're looking for one additional. So at one point, at one point it says one lot, the other it says two, just a total of two, one additional. Just for clarification.
Yep, okay, very good. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the subdivision? And when we get into the discussion on any motion that we have, we would go through conditions of approval as part of that discussion.
Commissioner Larson, I do have the draft motion, which you're welcome to use.
Can you call that up on our screen?
I can't, I'm on my iPad, but I can read it to you.
No. I think Mindy has got it there for us.
Yep.
And yep, so stop right there. We'll give us a chance to all read through that.
I do want to point out that there were no waivers requested. There are no, there's no need to act on waivers. It's easy to overlook.
Okay, scroll down a little bit there, Mindy. Thank you. Okay, the thing that I don't see in the proposal in, and we can add, is in the easement, we should authorize removal of invasive plants. So Mindy, if you can scroll back up to where it talked about the easement in here, I think that was.
I believe I refer to it as covenant, covenant.
Where is that covered?
Number two.
Number two.
However, I'm not sure that I ever addressed the monumentation of, of that, of the open space area.
Okay.
I'm trying, I mean, the applicant submitted a draft covenant.
Yep.
I wasn't going to have it reviewed before it was approved, just because anyone incurred a legal expense, quite frankly. And the form they used has been used before. It was used, came from Grimaldi's. So the format has been, is not new to our land use council. I'm not sure where it originally came from, but he approved Grimaldi's. And this one, the Korea, the Tesca covenant was based on that.
Okay, and just for the applicant's information here, when, you know, the couple of comments on the driveway was... Did we get, did we get a letter from Brandon Jim saying that he thought the driveway supported the 70,000 pounds or?
He addressed it by under here. He just, he said... He addressed it by under here, that he, he just, he said, add notes that the driveway shall be capable of supporting emergency equipment up to seventy thousand. Pounds and design construction materials shall be certified by a professional engineer. That should be professional, not profession, I miss. Engineer and submitted to the town for review prior to construction. So by adding that note, it's required, it's requiring that that be addressed at the time of construction.
Okay.
That's what he addressed it is, in his comments.
Now, I just remember seeing the, some letter that we got, that you sent out late this afternoon from Brandon, and I can't remember. Nope, that was about the gravel pit. Okay, so that's a different.
And that was not posted, that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I actually, I said, well, I, I'll bring that up under the gravel bit. When we get there.
So, so where can we add what you were talking about? Invasive.
I, I'll get there in a minute. I was just looking to make sure, I've got a note, and I will read it off here in a minute, and I was trying to see if. The draft motion here had monumentation in it.
And it does, but I, I want to be clear what monumentation, monumentation is for the open space, I think, right?
Well, it talks about monumentation, let me.
Go down to, I think it's on two there down.
So under monumentation seven, yeah, section seven point twelve of our subdivision regs. Says iron pins shall be installed at all lot corners. The commission shall require installation of such monuments in iron pins as a condition of approval. Of the subdivision or re-subdivision. It doesn't mean they need to be installed already, it's just a requirement that they are installed.
Right, but this is, this is saying monument, monumentation, that. Our reg, regulation said all monumentation and steel pins. So these are two different things, steel pins and monumentation are two different things.
Yep, understand, and there's some words in there that talk about monuments shall be placed at all block corners, angle points, points of curves and streets, and an intermediate points. On tangents over six hundred feet in length in principal corners of the lots.
All I'm getting at, Jett, is that it says a monumentation, it doesn't say monumentation and, and pins, and pins.
We're taking, I, I honestly use the term interchangeably, but, but perhaps wrong.
And I know in here, and I can't put my finger on it right at the, the moment, it does talk about, under the conservation easement. That monuments be installed there to identify. The. The easement.
And I just had to address that by way of number four there.
Yep. Okay.
So you just need to change that number three to on monumentation and pins will be installed.
Okay, and I'm looking back for which, which number was it where we're changing profession? To professional or whatever that was that you had a comment, Jim?
Well, it's under one, it's the one.
Seventy thousand pounds, right underneath seventy thousand pounds.
Yeah, yeah, third note, just. At, change profession to professional. If you go to number six, I, I just want to make sure that it's clear what, what I'm trying to do here is. The applicant shall take appropriate action to ensure that the drainage structure shown on the approved plan is maintained in perpetuity. What I'm talking about here is, is there is a drainage structure that's on the plan, it's designed to accommodate. The driveway drainage, the driveway leading from Old Farms Road. I'm not sure the best way, I mean, basically, that can't be built, you, you couldn't put. A building on that space, in that structure area, for instance, so I'm looking for some sort of language in the land records. I'm not sure what, what is the best approach, so I'm kind of deferring, it's really a legal. Legal issue, and I was just throwing it back to the applicant and the applicant's attorney could, could handle it by way of a deed, in the deed, I, I don't know. I'm leaving it up, leaving it open for them. That's, that's what I'm getting at by way of number six.
Okay, so at this point. I had the following. Additions or changes to what's displayed on the screen. On condition one, the third note, we would change profession to professional. Under item three. We would add after monuments and iron pins. And in item four, we would add removal of invasive plants from the easement is authorized.
From, from the area, from the open space area, no.
From the open space easement.
From the area. Easement to me sounds like the document, I, I, maybe it's just me, I don't know.
Just, okay, so on number four would be removal of invasive plants from the open space area is authorized.
Sure, and that'll be addressed when, when the covenant is reviewed. I mean, covenant should, should have that language in it.
Yeah.
In my opinion. If, if that's what you want, that's where it belongs.
Okay, and I was looking, and, and you thought maybe it might not be necessary, but I thought we were going to have. An item on. Damage to. The Doobie's driveway. As a result of. Equipment or materials being brought into the building site would be repaired by the applicants.
I think that's in there.
Okay. Where do you?
Number five.
Okay, very good, yep, so that's there, okay.
You know, just, just to be clear. I'm referencing the plan that you all reviewed, the plan that is on, on the website, the plan that I have a paper copy of. And as far as I'm concerned, the plan that Andrew changed. That's, that's a worksheet for him. You know, I'd like to see him incorporate. Whatever changes. The commission. Adds as condition. But I don't want to get, I don't want to confuse things with another plan that, that was never presented. So I'm referencing the plan that we revised. I believe it's, I have a date on there of, I believe, eight twenty twenty and revised through six fourteen twenty one, I believe.
I agree, and that's why, that's why I didn't make an issue of removing, you know, the Andover to Coventry, vice versa there.
Okay, oh, yeah, and that's, and that should be all in here, and I, I believe it is. I just, I want to clear that. This draft motion is intended to work with, in concert with the plan revised through six fourteen and not any subsequent plan.
Okay. And that, and that's what it says.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve the application with the conditions as specified.
I'll motion.
Second, this is Leanne. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, I. I guess you weren't done.
No, go ahead, Leanne.
No, I was just gonna second it, but I wasn't sure, I don't know if I cut you up as to how much of it you were gonna repeat.
No. I move to approve the plan as specified.
Then I'll second.
Any discussion?
I want further comment. I, I hope I, I structured this correctly. I mean, the applicant needs, needs a special permit in order to get the subdivision approved. I put them together, I hope that's. I, I assume that's okay. I could have structured it separately so that a special permit was approved first. And then the subdivision was acted upon. I didn't. Think this is okay.
Okay, and Jim, on the, on what we have displayed right now.
Yes.
Under item one. It's the precast concrete box culvert. Blah, blah, blah. Does that line end with page six, or is page six in there an artifact of it going over from one page to the next? In something we were working. I see page six on there between that and the driveways will not exceed a grade of ten percent.
I believe those, the two, the two comments below that are page six, are on page six of the plans.
Okay, you're right, that, that is, okay.
Yeah, I could have made that clearer, I suppose, son.
Nope, just so we all understand what that is, okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion. I will call for a roll call vote. Anne Creme.
I.
Scott Peterson.
I.
Leanne Hutchinson.
I.
Steve Nelson.
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Motion carries five zero zero. Congratulations to Eric and George, it's been a long journey. But we took another big step forward tonight.
Thank you very much, everyone, thank you. Thank you, guys.
So again. The, the approval will be, you'll run in the, in the newspaper, I think we'll, we'll try and get that in next week, and there's a two week. Period after that, that we can wait for an appeal before we actually start doing anything, but I think it'll probably be two weeks at this point before you get going there. So. I'm hoping that not delay you any more than we need to. Thank you. That wraps up that. The next, next item on the old business is. Discussion possible action, planning and zoning application. Twenty one dash oh four one twenty eight Wheeling Road. Applicant is seeking a site plan approval for accessory apartment in accordance with section four point one one of the Andover zoning regulations. And I think the applicant is with us tonight, I saw him.
I am, I am present.
Okay, Adam, thank you, the. As, as you recall. Yes, the, the item I struggled with last time was our regulations. Send us to, you know, the, the first. First thing in there is, is talking about. The requirements of section eleven point two space requirements are satisfied. And. As I go to section eleven point two. It talks about. The minimum lot size of sixty thousand square feet. And. If I'm not mistaken, your lot is short of that, that amount. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, you spoke last time, that is correct.
Yeah, your lot's about fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, correct.
Is, is I. Tried to. I guess I tried to look at this from, from the perspective of. Is it an administrative oversight in that when we changed Andover lot size used to be one. Forty thousand square feet and eighty thousand square feet, when we went to, you know, the Andover rural. Development, we made the lot requirement sixty thousand square feet. Did we not? Catch all the little pieces of that and have an unintended consequence where we made the lot. Smaller than our regulation. We precluded a, a normal sized lot in the past from being able to put on the accessory apartment. Certainly, that, that would be an item for the commission to. Can determine and vote on. I think. However, the requirement got in there, you know, again, for the planning and zoning commission, we can make. Almost whatever rules we want. But once the rules are the rules, whether we like them or not, is no longer applicable, we have to abide by them. And, and so. My, my thought is that as of today, you don't meet the size requirement. And there's probably. Two. Two options there. One, we talked last, last meeting about the potential to go to the zoning board of appeals. And I can't, you know, I can't say how that would go there to present your, why you've got a hardship there. I can tell you when we did last modify the. Accessory apartment regulations, we were concerned about small lots in putting accessory apartments on them. And that's why in the lake regs, we specify the minimum lot size in the Lake District with all the small lots there is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. The. The other thing that, you know, comes into play, and I don't know what your time frame for needing to do the accessory apartment is. But the state of Connecticut recently passed a lot of legislative changes. And I don't understand all of those changes yet, but there are some significant changes with respect to accessory apartments. And I think it's going to make accessory apartments easier to put in. Almost where it could be a matter of right, where you don't need to go to planning and zoning commission. Planning and zoning commission has an opportunity to opt out of that. But we haven't discussed at all what, what the thoughts of the different members are on, on that, and I. Don't want to do that tonight, we'll be doing that. In the not too distant future, as we go through the creation of an affordable housing plan for Andover. Where accessory apartments are a big part of, of that plan. So anyhow, for tonight, we can choose to. You can choose to withdraw your application at this point. Or we can vote on the application. And my suspicion is it might not pass because of that, but, but we owe you that for putting in an application. And so I'm looking for. Your thoughts on, on how you would like the commission to proceed.
Okay, if. If, if I, I don't want to withdraw it, if we choose to vote on it and I, it doesn't pass, can I take it to zoning board of appeals, or does it just completely get shut down? I guess is my question.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it does not get approved here, you can take it to the zoning board of appeals. So that's not.
Actually, there, there is nothing in the legislation that precludes you from another special permit application. Immediately, there, there is, is language to that effect for variance, a variance does not have. There, there is, is language to that effect for variance. A variance does not have to, the ZBA does not have to listen to a variance or entertain a variance that's not substantially different for six months. No such regulation in the planning and zoning, in the planning regulations, in the zoning regulations. Can I just touch, just mention, you know, I did look at the regulate, at the minutes for when the changes to the, when the ARD was established, and also when the accessory apartment regulation was changed. Well, no, it was changed for, just for detached. And there was no, there was no discussion. I, I saw nothing in, in the minutes that led me to believe that anybody thought about it. I did not initially bring it to the applicant's attention because I didn't think of it. Part of the reason is if somebody comes in for a, a building permit, for instance, and they have an existing lot, I don't look at the lot size. It was, that lot was created under, however, you know, under previous previous regulations and what have you. Having said that, it does read, I mean, regulations do read to cover lot size. Though I have.
Okay.
Okay, if I understand that correctly, if it, if it does get denied, they don't have to, the zoning board of appeals does not have to meet with me for six months. Is that correct?
No, not at all. I, I probably shouldn't have got into that. If, no. ZBA would, would hear your application immediately. They, they just, they have the right not to listen to it, to a reapplication for six months, but you haven't applied to them as yet.
Okay, yep.
Probably shouldn't have got into that. No, it's okay.
Clear, Frank.
I have one quick question.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So are the garage and the accessory apartment considered two separate line items on the application?
Yeah.
So the garage is considered to be part of the accessory apartment? But this, this was more for just clarification on my end. I just was looking at it today.
The application doesn't really differentiate, but, but as far as the app, the accessory apartment would be defined by the finished space. The square footage that I would, requirements would, would apply to the finished space, the living space, the habitable space.
Because the, when I was looking at the regs, and maybe I'm wrong, but the accessory apartment was calling out gross area. And the gross area was anything that was, I don't know, they had, there was a thing in there that said if it was more than half of the structure was showing above grade, then that was considered in gross area. So I was just curious, just for reference, if the garage is just someone putting an addition on their house, and the accessory apartment is another thing? Or if the entire unit that's being added on is the accessory apartment?
Well, well, it's not clear, Kevin. I think that the accessory apartment is the accessory apartment in the garage. At least what we did on a previous application is we allowed the garage space to contribute to the gross square footage. And in fact, on the last one, the applicant needed, I think, the, the gross square footage of the, the garage to give him enough so that he could go, you know, to the maximum 800 square foot being the right percentage of that. So it is kind of interesting that the applicant, I think, could put up a three-car garage without coming to us. But the accessory apartment on top of it, at this point, we're.
Right, because, because the room, because the room on top is, is at the maximum area. And then when you include the garage on the bottom, you way exceed the 33% allotment for additional capacity over the gross square footage of the house that already exists.
Yes. I did not consider the garage square footage to be part of the accessory apartment.
Okay, that was what I was wondering.
You're wrong on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering for clarification.
Good question.
Yeah, I, I, I assumed they were, that it wasn't part of the equation, but, but I could be mistaken.
So I have a question then. Can somebody who's.
Go ahead.
Somebody wants to build a garage, all they need is to have their plans and get a building permit. They don't need to be approved by us or P and Z. I mean, the ZBA. Is that correct?
As, as long as they meet the setback requirements, you know, for the lot and, and all those other things, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's basically what I was wondering too. Thanks, yeah.
Yep. It is. So if he puts in a garage, he can put in a garage. If he wants the accessory upstairs in the garage, he needs to get a, get a permit for that from us.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? And that's all good discussion. You never get into the, the sticky points of an application until you're right on the verge of whether or not you meet the requirements. When you, when you exceed the requirements by a lot, the discussion's always very easy. So at, at this point, I would, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the application? And the reason, you know, I say approve as opposed to a motion to disapprove, again, if we make a motion to disapprove an application and the motion fails, I don't know where that puts us. So we always go to the positive, make a motion to approve it, and then if it's denied, we know where we stand.
I'm moved that we approve the, the application for an accessory apartment at 128 Wheeling Road.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion on the application? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Anne?
I'd like to say aye.
Scott?
No.
Leanne?
No.
Steve?
Sorry, I was on mute. No.
And I vote no as well. The, the application is denied by a vote of four, one, zero. And to Adam, when you go to the zoning board of appeals, I recommend you, you include the discussion about the fact you can build the garage. And, and maybe they would be sympathetic to why can't you put the accessory apartment up there? If they don't agree, come back, you know, after, in less than a year, we should have the, the matter resolved. And I think we will be more lenient. Certainly, my vote against has got nothing to do with the project you want to do. Out of an obligation to, to meet our regulations as they are currently written, and I like what you're trying to do.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Who would I follow up with about the zoning board of appeals? I know there's a application online. I've already printed out. Would I would send that into just the town hall with the check as well?
You should, you should discuss that with Agent Halcy, who, you know, the, ZBA, you know, he's, he is the agent for the ZBA as well, so in this case, we've made that easy for you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to old business five C. Request of Christopher Bell, agent for William Joe Genovese, applicant seeking an extension of existing special permit to operate sand gravel pit at 517 Route 6. And that's section 16 of the Andover zoning regulations. We, we've had the, I guess the real reason that, that I added this to the agenda tonight, because we did, in fact, authorize the approval at the last meeting. There was a question as to whether or not the, there was a cease and desist from planning and zoning. And, and there was a cease and desist letter, letter issued. It went to the property owner, not the owner's engineer, and that's why Chris Bell, as of the last meeting, had not, not seen that. Also, Jim was, our agent was not at the last meeting, and I wanted to, you know, he, he's been a little bit tied up, and I know we have not issued the notice of approval in, in a, you know, timely manner to get that done. And so the, with, with those couple of loose ends, I wanted to put this on the agenda again for discussion tonight so that we could get an update from Agent Halsey on, on where we actually stand on that and make sure that all our questions.
All right, my, yes, the, the cease and desist was sent to Bill Genovese, who is the applicant of record. I sent it to him at the address his business address, because that was the, that was the address on the application. Whether he received it or not, I, I don't know. But my plan was to have them file a, I mean, the special permit for the original approval is filed on the land records. So I was having them file an extension in a similar fashion, along with just a letter saying that the, the cease and desist is hereby lifted. And when they file that document, it's a one-page document in the land records, that would effectively negate the cease and desist, as far as I'm concerned. That's appropriate approach. On the second matter, I know that there was an issue about the detention pond. The applicant wanted to, to grade that over, I believe. And I did get written correspondence from the town engineer, Brandon Hanfield. I saw it today, and I sent it for posting late or early this evening. It will get posted when, when Amanda, who, who does her postings, is in the office next, assuming. And he was in, in concurrence that he thought it would be a good idea. There was no need to retain that pond for, for, as far as protection of the site, and that it would, he, the site would be in a better situation for development and marketing without that pond. Am I still on?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think everybody's just trying to take in all this because this is late-breaking news.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. Yep.
My name is Chris Bell, a professional engineer representing the applicant. Just, just to back up a couple of steps, as you recall, you gave me four items, bullet items to take care of by the next meeting. Number one is to report every week to Jim House. He give him a written report of an update of the gravel pit, of any outstanding items, and any new items that may have arose, which I have done every week. We had to get the grass that's on the very top of the mound that we couldn't see from below, but you can see from a much higher elevation. That finally got done. We were really delayed by the amount of rain that we had. Because after rain, we had to wait till it dried out, so we wouldn't get, the truck wouldn't get stuck in there. But it finally got done just over a week ago, I guess, about two weeks ago. We did get blocks to block the turtle nesting area. There were some on site, which they put up about a, a week after the last meeting. And there are additional blocks that we had ordered, which aren't really necessary to block anymore. I mean, the two blocks do a, a pretty good job. You can't really drive through that area. But we're going to put a couple additional blocks up there, and also we have some that are going to be used for the front driveway. Once the gravel pit closes, we're going to block off that driveway. So that's why we, we have quite a few on site. The last item was the item regarding the detention pond. Remember, Scott Persons asked us to, to look into the matter. This was a suggestion by John Valenti a couple of years ago to leave it there, which I wasn't for or against at the time, but as we thought about it, we think it should be filled for a number of reasons. First of all, it's going to be a liability for the owner. He's going to have to grade it, seed it, most likely put a fence around it. I would suggest putting a fence around it. And, and it's not the most ideal place for a detention pond, and it's a little bit oversized for what a site might be using. This afternoon, the, the town engineer, Brandon, Brandon, sent a letter. I don't know if everyone's read the letter or not.
I think they have not. That was the letter that you talked about previously.
Um, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I, with your permission, I, I can put that up on the screen. With permission, I'll, I can share my screen if you want to read it.
Okay, yep, go ahead, Chris.
See. I think it's going to try to take up too much of the space here. Hold on. I'm told that it's on. Did everybody see it?
Yep. Did you see it? Yes.
Okay.
We'll give everybody a couple of minutes to, to read through it there. Okay, I think everybody's had a chance to, to take a look at that. And again, I apologize for not getting that posted so that everybody could see it before we came to the meeting tonight. But as I see it, the, the commission tonight can, we can, can, you know, our job tonight is to consider whether or not we should modify the existing plan, the existing restoration plan to remove the requirement to maintain the detention basin based on the recommendation of the applicant's engineer and our engineer.
Is that going to be a motion, Jed?
That, that will be a motion now that I've explained what it is that we're trying to do. I am going to ask somebody to make a motion to do just that.
Could I add a note, Mr. Chairman? Comment?
Yes.
With your permission. I can, we, we can have this inclusive as part of the ASBIL, because we have to do an ASBIL for the project as, as part of the final restoration. When the restoration is done, we have to do a grading plan. When the restoration is done, we have to do a grading plan to show that we're at grade. And I mean, we can just have this as an order to close the detention pond. And I guess what I would need to ask is, normally, we would take everything out, the pipe and everything else. We wouldn't want to leave that there. But we would put it back, you know, have the whole grading plan done like that. I mean, I don't want to have to go back and forth to the commission with this. I mean, would you agree we should take everything out? And basically, you know, the whole site is gonna be silt fenced and it'll be up to someone else's job to design the site plan and detention basin. You know, it's not gonna have an increase in runoff because of all the grass. I mean, this was, you know, really bare ground like a meadow before, so it's...
No, I understand. And my goal tonight was to just get the motion into our minutes. And then, you know, between Agent Halsey and our engineer and you, you can work through the details of, does the pipe stay or go? But we will authorize changing the plan to...
To remove it.
To... Yeah.
Okay.
Remove the detention basin as part of the restoration.
Okay.
So that, you know, I was... I think all of us were unhappy when we found out how much of the original plan we weren't doing. And so I would feel like to have a clear what we're changing in the plan so that when you do your final wrap-up report, there's justification for all that we've got there.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think we had Scott made a motion. And I don't know that we had a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Any discussion by the commission on the motion?
Yes, this is Leanne. I have two or three questions.
Go ahead.
So this motion is strictly about the detention basin?
Yes.
Okay, so have the... To be clear, because as you said, we did get some items, some information just tonight. Have the other three items from last month's minutes been fulfilled? And has the zoning agent seen them?
Yes. That was... Yes, the answer to the question is yes. And that was, you know, the discussion that Chris Bell had just a minute ago, where he talked about, you know, the letter that he sent to Jim dated 16 July. And I think that one is posted online. But it only got posted today, so if you didn't, if you missed it, that's understandable. But it says, "The special seed for the turtle nesting area is still on order. Concrete blocks were installed to protect the turtle nesting area. Bear area on top of the back hill was hydro-seeded last Saturday. There was no removal of material this week." And he sent all the information to Brandon, which we did look at the letter that Brandon sent back in response to that, recommending removal of the detention basin. So the other items that we had talked about at the last meeting have all been addressed.
Okay, and that includes the item that says, "Submit weekly reports to the zoning agent on the status of the project?"
Yes.
That was not addressed specifically in the letter, but Chris Bell did say that he had been reporting to Agent Halsey on a weekly basis.
And to the best of my knowledge, I posted each of those reports.
Okay, I didn't see them. I didn't know there was anything in addition to what we were sent as... But if you're stipulating that it's there, then okay. And my other question is, I guess I'm a little confused about the cease and desist part. If Mr. Genovese was sent a cease and desist letter to the address on file, but as I understand it, Mr. Bell said tonight and last month that he didn't know about it. And I think the chairman also didn't... Was a little up in the air about whether or not it had been issued in the first place. Is that right, Jed?
That is correct. I knew... I had seen the letter that Jim wrote, because he had it vetted through Mark Brandt, our attorney. And so I knew the letter existed. Who specifically it got mailed to was the part that I was unclear of. And, you know, Jim's unavailability, you know, leading up to the last meeting, didn't give me a chance to chase that down.
I don't believe I posted that letter until such time as it was brought to my attention that there was some confusion.
Do we not send things by certified mail or registered mail or something that requires a signature for something like this?
We do.
Yeah.
And so we didn't get anything back?
We do send a cease and desist by certified mail. Yes, definitely.
And so nothing was received back by the town?
I don't believe so, no.
The applicant recalls, and I recall the cease and desist from Wetlands. And that's the one we were really concentrating on to get done right away. I never saw the cease and desist for planning and zoning. But, you know, as we worked through the Wetlands one, by the time that was done, well, we were okay with the items, I guess, on the cease and desist for the planning and zoning. But I don't... The applicant doesn't recall he seeing that either. But he did get the one from Wetlands, like I saw also.
So I'm gonna assume that the address on file that we had is the same that the Wetlands Commission had?
I wouldn't assume that at all. I don't know.
You wouldn't assume that?
No. I know that the Wetlands agent had issued with a document that went to Mr. Genovese in the past.
What kind of issue?
Quite honestly, if the app... Somebody doesn't pick up a certified letter, it's not really my concern. That's what I've been told to... I mean, quite frankly, I didn't care, because I was working with the applicant and his engineer to address the problem, the issues that were cited. So it was... I assumed he had gotten it, but I don't know.
Um, I'll tell you something, from being up in his business in New Britain, he gets a lot of certified letters every day. And it doesn't surprise me if this just went past his desk and, you know... Maybe he never saw it. Right? He did see the Wetlands one, because we all talked about it, everything else. But if you didn't get a receipt back, then he didn't get it, or he didn't...
Jim, if you didn't get a receipt back, then he didn't get it, is that...
Yeah.
No, that doesn't mean anything. Well, yes, it means... It doesn't mean that... I mean, a lot of people choose not to pick up their certified mail.
Right, they didn't sign. He didn't sign for it, so he didn't get the receipt back. Right.
That will go right back to you immediately. It doesn't... From what I remember, when someone doesn't sign a certified letter, it goes right back to the person that sent it with a note saying, "Guess what? They didn't sign it, or they didn't accept it."
Right.
It doesn't hang around anymore. Doesn't get lost. Hopefully not. It goes back to whoever sent it.
Right.
Well, this is Leanne again. I'm sorry, was somebody else still finishing?
Nope, I had Leanne.
Um, I don't... As long as the other conditions, the other three conditions from last month's minutes are okay and, you know, the zoning agent wasn't available last month. So the people are in agreement about the detention basin tonight. But I would like for the record to say, I don't think it should be our problem if somebody doesn't either open their certified mail, send it back, whatever you're supposed to do, because that's the whole point of certified mail. And a cease and desist is a big deal. And I just would like to say for the record that I don't think it should be our problem that we didn't get it back. And I think I'm gonna respectfully disagree with Jim that it should have been looked out for, if that's the term, on the town's end, whether it was, you know, him or... I'm not sure what the arrangement is right now, you know, with... You know, we used to have a full-time administrative assistant. We know we don't have one anymore in the building department, and that's been in flux with cross-training. But I just think it's important to note that nobody knows what happened to it.
Leanne, I'm in agreement. It's... Once we send it out, it's a done deal.
Are you saying that we have a record of it? So it's... We do have a defense, if that's the right word, if we don't get anything back?
Yeah.
So we do have a record of sending it? And then...
Yes.
So you're saying that is... If I understand what you're saying, that's sufficient to show that the town did their part?
Yes. If we had to move forward with civil action, that would have sufficed in court. That's the advice that I've gotten in the past from Mark Brandt.
Okay, well, that's fine then. It just sounds a little funny that it, you know, the explanation tonight, the way I heard it, was that anybody can either ignore anything on purpose or if they genuinely don't get it, but the fact remains that the town never heard back. But if you're saying that as long as we can document what we did, then that holds up, then I guess that's satisfactory to me.
Yeah, it's possible that something came back indicating that he didn't, you know, that it wasn't picked up. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I do know that I have a record of mailing it. That's all. That's all I can say.
If we have a record of mailing it...
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Keep a receipt, and that's got the tracking number. You should be able to look it up.
Yes, we have it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and I will... I share Leanne's, you know, concern that it is a big deal. I guess the matter and mitigation in this particular case was, you know, that Jim and I both knew that all work at the gravel pit was stopped. And so it appeared to us like the letter had been received. Well, we'll do a better job of tracking that stuff going forward a little bit, because, you know, it was our goal to get it stopped, and it did get stopped. But we ought to... If it hadn't, then we hadn't been tracking that. You know, if it hadn't stopped, and then we were talking about it a month later, that would have not been a good situation. So I guess that's the only blemish I see on what I thought was a very successful remediation and renewal of the gravel pit application.
Quite frankly, I had, you know, numerous... I had a lot of conversations with Chris Bell on the matter and met him and other parties on-site, you know. And I wasn't concerned about... The issues were being taken care of. And I wasn't overly concerned about whether somebody received the cease and desist.
Yep, but, you know, we should, because at some point in time, the cease and desist won't have ceased. And then we'll be trying to figure out, you know, why that... And something untoward could happen then. So we'll look at that a little bit. We certainly did our part from the town, but it would be nice to know that the guy got the letter that we took such pains to send to him with tracking system on it. Okay, well, that's all that I'd like... Yeah, I think we covered enough the the ability to mail at this point. We'll do better.
Jim, what stage of that... At what stage will the detention pond leave?
It would be towards the end of the project.
Was that written anywhere? When are they gonna fill it, pull the pipe and all that?
Well, it would be part of the final phase, I believe. I mean, I'm saying that based on memory. I don't have the plan in front of me. I don't... I can't swear that's the case, but that would certainly make sense to me.
Chris, do you have... When do you think the detention pond will...
My understanding was the detention pond's gonna be there until we final grade the site and have enough material to fill it and have grass growing. And then we basically... That's the last thing we do is fill the pond, topsoil, seed that. And that's it. That's the last thing we do. Because that detention pond should stay there until we're really done with the, you know, grading operation.
That's gonna be the last thing before you drive out of there.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed... I didn't get that one through. I mean, it's on the plan. It's shown to stay there, and now we're discussing eliminating.
I mean, this is why we put it where we put it, because we wanted to be close by to the end of the operation. We went back and forth where we were gonna start the project. Initially, we were gonna start in the front, but it works best for the pond to be there. If you start in the front, it works best if the pond is there, if you start in the middle. And that's what we started in the middle, so we said, "Good, we'll just leave it there, put a channel to it." And that'll be the last place for... Last place for us to be as far as grading goes.
Um, another question I have is, I recall that they were supposed to put stones around the turtle, the turtle area.
Oh, we had a discussion the next day. You're correct. We talked about large stones. And I called Jim the next day when I told the owner he had to put large stones. He said very bluntly, he goes, "I don't really have any of those. I don't like large stones. I have some concrete blocks. Wouldn't that be better?" I said, "Well, they're bigger than what we needed." But... And I asked Jim about that, and I asked the town engineer, and they both didn't seem to have any objection to that. They can definitely be a lot easier moved with a forklift than the rocks could. So I was... I didn't get any oppositions. I didn't want to have to wait to come back to the commission, ask them again, and miss the date of being... Having that done for two weeks, so we put those concrete blocks up right away. I hope that the commission wasn't dead-set on having large stones. But again, it is your choice. I hope that...
You have a concern on this, Scott?
Excuse me?
Did you have a concern about, you know, the concrete blocks versus stones?
I think the turtles would probably like the stones better. To be honest with you, but...
They're a lot bigger than the turtles. I don't know if they...
Yeah, it could be imposing to the turtles. I don't know.
I was...
It always comes down to what the commission says. And then when we get to the field, people change things.
Well, I suggest you put less blocks up and put, you know, treat, you know, like a white oak log across it. It would look nice, and he didn't like that either. So this is what I... This is what we got. But it's up to the commission.
Well, do we have something that says stones are required? Or, you know, I thought that came up as a comment during...
Yeah, Chris Bell said that he was gonna get them off his property.
Yeah, that didn't happen either.
Well, we're gonna get the concrete blocks off the property?
No, it's stones.
And also, the detention basin originally was supposed to be blue at every stage of the project.
That wasn't actually part of the conditions. That was a suggestion.
That was... Yeah, that was... I recall that.
Yeah, I do recall that, but I...
There was... There's a lot of things that have changed. But I don't have any problem. If everybody else is all right with the concrete blocks, I'm all right. But if I had my druthers, I would put stones in.
Okay.
I would tend to agree with that, but I was not voted.
Well, based on Agent Halsey and our engineer, you know, thinking that that was okay, I think that that should be okay. And if you want that in the motion, you know, we can put that in the motion. But... I know the item that we were supposed to be coming back to discuss, you know, was in fact the detention basin. And that's where I'm at. So I think we have a motion on the floor to delete the requirement to maintain the detention basin as part of the restoration plan. And I think we had a second to that motion. Is that correct, Mindy?
Yes, I had a second. We just didn't vote on it.
Okay, so now we've had any other discussion on that before we vote? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Ann? Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion passes five zero zero.
Hey, thank you. And I, I assume, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, you'll still be looking for a report every week from me?
That's correct, uh, in, unless Agent Halcy comes to us and says, "No, I'm tired of getting that, all those emails, uh, once a month," or, you know, I like having the report before the, uh, the meeting, an update. Uh, Jim, you have any flavor for whether you think, uh, weekly or monthly is better for you?
Weekly, I like weekly.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I, I don't think it's a tremendous amount of work.
Let's stick with weekly.
Well, if nothing's going on, there's not a lot of work. I, I will try to get it on a Thursday morning so that you can get it, uh, posted. Um, I waited a lot of times till Friday, because I was waiting to get something from somebody, and, you know, uh, when I don't get it, I gotta put the letter out anyway, and I was hoping to get something done. I'll ma- I'll try to make sure it's done at least about every Thursday. Again, nothing's been happening there. The owner says, you know, "You're gonna get everything done before you start moving stuff again." So now that we've got everything resolved, um, they're ready to go again.
Okay, well, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but we need to wait two weeks following, do we need to wait two weeks following the issuance, uh, of the, the letter in the newspaper to allow anybody to, uh, complain? I don't know what, uh, what the technicality is there, but, uh, in this case, since it's a renewal versus, uh, you know, approval of an application, uh, do we need to wait two weeks at this point, or is, uh, is, uh, the applicant good to go?
I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason to hold him up. Okay, valid to revoke, as far as I'm concerned.
And, uh, Chris, I think, uh, based on, uh, on that, and the fact that this is a permit renewal, I agree that, uh, you're good to go on start moving, uh, material from the gravel pit again. I think, uh, you know, all of us wanna see it wrapped up sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. And now, I'll be watching a closer eye on this, and soon as we get to the point when we're, you know, an area, uh, as agreed to, you know, less than two phases, you know, like a phase and a half, which is only gonna be another, maybe once he takes that big mound that's out there, and some of the bank, it's not gonna be too long till we have to do another, uh, you know, bring the restoration up to the next point again, you know, go up another hundred feet. So, but we'll be watching them.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Chris.
Next item on the agenda is discussion, possible action, previously approved special permit for previously approved kennel at two forty-one Route Six. And, uh, we talked about this a little bit last time. I went out and, and did some more research, as did Jim, following that. And while it is clear to me that, uh, the permit was approved by the commission, and we have the permit, the underlying documentation that should have gone in like a site plan to, uh, to support the application, so that we here know what would be approved is, is missing. We, we have not been able to, uh, to find that. So I don't know, I know the special permit was approved, but I don't know what they approved. And, and so I'm trying to figure out, uh, the way ahead, uh, getting with, uh, Agent Halcy today, there's, uh, I think we use the term permit modification.
Yes.
And, uh, and based on the fact, uh, that there have been, you know, no complaints about the, the kennel operation having gone on, uh, in the past numerous years that it has been in existence. You know, there's words in our regulations that would allow us to, if we've already gone and held a public hearing, and this, this permit is gonna be very similar to what was approved in the past. Uh, we don't have to do that again, and we can just process a, uh, a modified application so that we can discuss what it is that the applicant is really doing, where he's doing, uh, and then we can compare that to our regulations and make sure that, uh, you know, it meets what our, what, what the regulations require. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Beebe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked with Jim today. He said he would help me get that together for you guys. Yep, yeah. And, uh,
I know the original plan and everything like that. I mean, I don't have it with me, but the main thing, and I may be able to find it, was originally, it was a huge commercial kennel, and right now, it's just fencing in a field and use of some of the existing, like a heifer barn that was on the farm previously. So I never went and built the elaborate building and kennel runs and all that. So that's what the original plan is. Right now, and Jim's been there, and, um, some other people know about it. I mean, you can Google Earth it. It's, um, it's just fencing in a field off of a heifer barn, and some kennels that you would buy a tractor supply to house the dogs during the day, and then I have a, I have a bus that holds seventeen crates that we go on field trips and things like that. And I just want the board to know, like, this all came about because I bought my partner out, and it, the state wants to inspect the, the facility, which they've alr- I already had them come in and inspect it, so I would know when I passed what I have to do, and I don't have to do anything. But the funny part in all this matter is, is if I park my bus at the commuter lot and load my clients, I'm not breaking any laws. But if I, at the farm and I have it there, I'm, they want me to have all these permits. Where actually, it's safer for everybody on a two-hundred acre farm.
I, uh-
It's kinda nonsense.
And, and so one of the things, for, I asked you last time, why is it that if you've got a training facility, we're, we're asking to put a kennel in, and for everybody else, this is section nineteen of our-
So, hold on, hold on. You asked if I was putting in a kennel, and the answer right now is no. Down the road someday, maybe, you know, the landowner is Serenity Post. She said if I ever want to put in a kennel. But right now, I'm not looking. I'm at the end of my career.
Yep.
You know, I'm fifty years old. I'm looking for ten more years to train dogs in a field and, and on my merry way of retirement. I'm not looking to build any facility.
And, and-
It's all, it's all existing buildings on the property.
And, and as long as those indoor housing facilities comply with state regulations for commercial-
And, and that's, that's what this is all about, for Jim to sign a paper for the state of Connecticut to go there and say whether or not I'm meeting regulations.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that you do meet that requirement?
Yes, 'cause I had them, so listen, I'm also the town of Andover ACO, so-
I got it.
I've been dealing with the state of Connecticut in some form or another in the ag business for the last twenty-five years, so I have a good relationship with them, so I already asked them to come and inspect me. So that when I got this paper signed, if there was a problem, I could already have it addressed. Right, and the only, the only real glitch in that whole thing is the boarding, and that's because of the dogs coming during the day and staying more than five hours.
Yep.
That, and the state classifies me as a boarding facility, even though I'm not a boarding facility. They had nowhere to put it in their licensing years ago, so that's where it falls.
Okay, I just don't want to approve a permit, and then the state comes back and says, "What a bunch of yoyos you guys are."
No, no, no.
So, so if you put in an application, then, the, the other, you know, the other question I have for you is I saw that, uh, on the, the little outline map that we have posted, you have to be very close, if not within, the flood-prone district.
So I don't know where that is, and I talked to Jim, but I seriously doubt I'm within the flood zone district because-
He's not into-
Yeah, Scott knows the property better than I do.
Okay.
And, I mean, um, I'm next to the cemetery, so you allowed him to bury people there, so I doubt him in a flood zone.
Okay, good enough. I, I went, uh, you know, to our zoning map that has the flood-prone district on it, and I see that it's over there by Pine Ridge Drive.
Oh, I'm not over there.
Well, the, the map-
I mean, I know it's there, but, I mean, Scott can tell you.
Okay.
He knows that land better than anybody.
Yep, I, I'm there. That's why we're talking about it tonight. Because when I looked at the map you provided, it looked like you'd, it was drawn within the flood-prone district.
Okay.
Yeah, and regulations say you can't do that.
Right, right.
Now, that doesn't mean that it, you say you've got two hundred acres over there you're using for a kennel, that maybe a small portion of that in the flood-prone district, I don't really care, but you, the majority of your kennel area shouldn't be where, where it's gonna flood.
Right, but, and what I'm telling you is, is I don't have a kennel area, right? I, I use the heifer barn that's been there. It's just a concrete slab, and then there's just kennels, kennels, like you would buy a tractor supply, sitting on the ground on peystone. Right, so there's, I, I'm not building any buildings, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I, I'm, the only thing I'm using is where you've already approved these buildings before, where there were sixty cows at one time. Scott, can you explain better than I can? I mean, you know the land.
I get, I wanna know, I, I would like to just know what Jed wants, and the commission needs to know before they okay it, that's all.
Yeah.
I just know it's not in the flood zone, Jed.
Okay, and, and that's good to know, you know, the map, the map that we provide on where the kennel is operating ought to reflect that.
Right.
What I can tell you, what I can tell you that I did was I looked through our regulations on kennels, and tried to answer the question, are we in compliance with those, and I could not do that.
Right.
None of the other commission members can either.
It's, uh, every different type of kennel or the usages at all, everyone goes back to camp in the flood-prone di- district. Uh, elevation Jed is at the same elevation as house that's down there, so.
Okay, yep, but it would be nice if the application, you know, addressed what the requirements are, and, and we can make a decision based on our regulations.
I should say something about what type of kennel, what type are we gonna have here, too? Right?
And-
Presently a type C, which is a commercial kennel.
Commercial kennel, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I wasn't here when you got the original, when he went through the process initially, but, I mean, I don't have any problem handling, training, grooming, showing, um, seems to certainly fall under this, the definition of kennel here. I, I don't-
Right.
Right, the fact that they may not spend the night there is not a particular concern to me. Seems like the right approach. I mean, the way it was handled initially, and, and, uh, modification could just address what's, what is there now, and with, with the approval of the commission, and I'd be happy to transpose, um, that flood zone. What I did, you know, when I met with Scott out there, we did discuss the flood zone. Um, I didn't have the flood zone. I didn't have the map and hit my hand, but we got a vague idea as to where it was. It's, it seems to be a distance from, from any, any activity that's, that's going on there.
Okay, so the, the request for the commission at this point, I think, is to have a motion that tells, that asks the applicant to provide a modified application for our approval.
Okay, so
Again, Scott, you're, you're, you know, much more familiar with this stuff than I am, but I read words that-
Thanks.
They, no kennel will be so located or allowed to fall into such state of repair as to constitute an eyesore, either to the adjacent property owners or the general public.
Right.
And-
And, and so my whole thing here is I don't have a building. Right, so as much as they want me to be under the commercial kennel, it's because the dogs stay for more than four hours.
Well, and does that mean that you have to make it so the dogs don't stay more than four hours, so that you can be in compliance with the regulations?
No, there's, it's not that I'm not in compliance with any regulations. The point is, I don't have a building. Right, so what the state is saying is, all I need is the town to sign that one piece of paper that says, "I have approval to train dogs there, and they can be there." And then they take all the regulations that apply from the Department of Agriculture, no different than the dog pound or any other farm, and then they come in and inspect. So like the inspections do for the town pound. She'd go from there, three driveways up, and then inspect my place. Just like a commercial kitchen in a restaurant.
Yeah.
And so, yes, I mean, I would agree. I, I agree that if it's an eyesore, I have to keep it up.
I, I don't see anything here, Jed, that, I mean, highest classification is ten acres. You have to have over ten acres. He's on two hundred, probably a thousand, maybe not a thousand feet, but he's, you know, seven hundred feet from the closest home. And, um, and it's the elevation of the home that's down there that Scott's mother lives in, so.
Okay. I, I know that this is, is an area that is probably not black and white.
Right.
Our job is to receive an application
Right.
from an applicant that shows how they meet the regulations, and then we vote on whether or not it meets regulations. We don't have any of that. We have meeting minutes that say, "Previous special permit was approved." We don't know what was approved.
Right.
We don't know what the conditions of approval were, and so I'm looking for that information so we can make an assessment.
Right.
That, does that make sense?
We, we need a, a motion to provide a modified application to the zoning agent for approval.
This is Leanne. I think that's reasonable.
Thank you. And you, you were, you were there all this-
Leanne was there through all of it. Me and Luette, like, she was there the whole time.
And I know Susan England was as well, but she's not here tonight. But, but that's what I'm looking for, is to, you know, tell the story of what we actually have. We asked to build a kennel that we didn't build, and, you know, I'm told it's in a different spot from what was approved, and I can't find anything that talks about what was actually approved, and so I need a little bit more so the commission can vote on it. In good conscience, are we doing what makes sense?
Now, that was the motion that I just gave you, Jed.
Okay, read it again, Scott, please.
Motion to provide modified application to the zoning agent for approval.
And would that be, are, are you, uh, suggesting that doesn't need to come back to planning and zoning?
Um, it, as, as long as it fits with the regulations, as long as it's with the regulation.
I think-
Who would it go to?
I, if it's gonna be a class Charlie kennel, it's gotta come back to the commission.
A commercial class? Ask a commercial class?
Yes.
For approval, then we'll change it to, for approval by planning and zoning.
Okay.
So motion to provide a modified, modified application to the zoning agent for approval by planning and zoning.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second, this is Leanne.
Thank you, Leanne. Any other discussion?
And that's what you're looking for is, is something on paper that said that he fulfills all the regulation requirements.
Yes.
And some good, uh, maps showing that it's out of the flood zone. How far it is from adjacent neighbors.
It talks about a fence in there. It'd be nice to have the fence.
It's going to be fenced in.
Perfect. Okay, any other discussion?
So just, this is Leanne, just to be clear, Mr., Mr. Bebe isn't saying that he's going to establish a kennel. Now, he wants and needs from the state, something from the town. That approves what he's doing now. Base, is that in a nutshell? I know we talked about flood zone and neighbors. And things like that.
That's my.
I know in a nutshell, it was in a technical term, but.
That's my.
He's not building a structure, but he's operating a kennel. He, he's operating the training facility. Which falls under commercial kennel.
And is that because of a number of hours right there that the dogs are on the premises?
Mm-hmm.
That has, that's a state regulation that.
Okay.
I'm dealing with our local regulation.
Right.
I mean, all, all I'm trying to do is to get the applicant. To come up with a, I mean, the idea is to come up with a, a, a plan showing what's there now or poses to do. And treat it as a modification to the existing permit that was approved. That was never.
Okay, that sounds. If we get something, as Jed said, if we get something just like that, it sounds like it would be helpful to us and the applicant. To show what's going on.
Yeah, the applicant also.
Hey, any other discussion? Hearing time, call for a vote, Ian? Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes five zero zero. Moving on. Affordable housing plan and recent legislation. So. Mindy, if you can allow me to share my screen, I will go through what I've got on that tonight.
To be able to.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so not, not a smooth PowerPoint vote. This fireworks are going off. Must be time to close the meeting. The, uh. I'm gonna go shut my door and maybe I'll keep some of that noise out of here. Is, is the location of the presentation such that any, anybody can see it well? For me, I've got all the pictures over on the right-hand side and it's blocking out the edge of the presentation. How about that? Okay, we'll try that. So anyhow. At the, at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we submitted a, uh. A request to the state for a grant to do our affordable housing plan. And that is it. Since then, you know, and we have not heard back whether or not the, the grant's approved or not. I assume that it will be. But we have put out a request for, I put RFP, request for proposal, request for quote, whatever. A request for bid for the different planners around the state. To, uh, you know, come in that want to help us build our affordable housing plan. And we issued that on July 15th. And so just on the big, big scheme of things. What we're looking at on this, you know, we want the, the bids are due back to Eric. On the first of September, we're going to look to award the contract on the first of October. Hold an initial public hearing in November on development of the plan. Work on the plan over the course of the winter. In April, hold the public hearing on the proposed plan. So it, in May, we can approve it and submit it to the state. So that's the big picture on affordable housing plan, what we've got there. In, in the information for this is what I sent out to everybody a link. Steve, I don't recall whether or not I sent it to you, but there was a link from Halloran Sage. That, that talked about all the legislative changes and lots of words in that. And I'm trying to figure out what the actions are so I can hold me to making sure that we get the actions done in time. So if I didn't send that to you, Steve, let me know and I'll, I'll try it again.
Yeah, I don't think I saw it, Jed, but I'll check my inbox again.
Okay, yep, and very well could be that, that I missed you on that. It was a while ago that that went out. One of the, one of the things that is in the legislation that changed a lot is on accessory apartments. And, uh, in these changes for accessory apartments will be effective January 1st, 2022. And it's a little confusing to me how it works, but we can, I guess, I guess in January 2022 is when they can be effective. If we choose as a commission to opt out of those requirements, we have to do that by January 1st, 2023. I would have thought that we would have had to opt out before they went into effect, but that's, that what I see there. But on January 1st, 2023, unless we opt out, any non-compliant existing regs. With these, respect to these updates become null and void, which essentially gives. Any property owner. The, the right to build an accessory apartment on any authorized lot. We might not want that. We might not want that. Maybe out in the ARD, we, we don't want that for a. Forty thousand square foot lot.
Right, in the, in the lake zone, it requires 120,000.
Yep, and lake zone requires 120,000 because we've got some lots in the lake zone that are maybe an eighth of an acre. Now, I think I've seen 8,000 square feet for, for lot size and, and certainly with the, the problems of. Of septic design and all that stuff in the lake zone, we do want something different. So what I plan to do is when we get this smart planner guy to help us build the affordable housing plan. Since accessory apartments are a key element of that, he can lead the discussion through. A discussion on that and we can figure out what it is that, that we want to do. But I was not willing to commit to our applicant tonight to have that done in the very near future. Because there are a lot of changes coming on with respect to planning and zoning and, uh. I think we're going to struggle, I'm going to struggle to do this. Now, if there's somebody out there. On the commission that wants to assist in developing proposed changes. That has legal backgrounds and that sort of thing, and I'm all in favor of any assistance. That might come my way on any of that. But I think, uh. Other than that, you know, this can be part of what the planner is helping to guide us through. So that's, that's going to be a big change. And if we do nothing, you know, everybody's got a chance to put in a, a. The, an accessory apartment, and I think it authorizes, we, we limit it to 800 square feet. The new state regs would propose that we go up to 1,000 square feet for the accessory apartment. New requirement for commission training. I got to be the chairman of the planning and zoning commission without any training whatsoever. And it did not feel good. And, and so I do think that, that it's good that we all get to do. Some training and, and it's not an immediate problem for us, but it says after January 20. January 1st, 2023, each member shall get four hours of training by the next year. And we're going to do training every other year thereafter. So it's. Four hours every other year. I, I, I know that we have, uh. You know, a hard time getting people to, uh, to want to be on the commissions because everybody's overextended, but, uh. I think. You would all find this beneficial. The people that have gone to the various trainings we've held, I think have all thought that it was very worthwhile. So, um, that'll be coming and, and I encourage you all to do the training that's available to us. Starting as soon as the next one comes around. I've been to several and I thought they were all, you know, very worthwhile. And I need to report compliance annually to the board of selectmen on how we're doing on that. So that'll be a part of our deal. Then I put a slide in here on other stuff and, uh, a couple of other things that, uh. You know, as of the first of July of this year, we are required to resume posting our decisions. And our public hearings and all that in the local newspaper. That was, uh, that was. Eliminated as a requirement due to the pandemic. I think those rules are, are, have expired on the end of June. And so now we are encouraged to continue electronic posting, but we need to go back to the, uh. Uh, posting in the, the river east as well. And, uh, and I like seeing those things in there that. That's how, you know, I learned a lot about what's going on in the town. April 1st, 2022, there's, uh. Permanently updated regulations on outdoor dining. Then, and again, as I look through it, they were kind of confusing to me. Didn't know exactly what they said. Uh, Jim hasn't had the opportunity to look at those yet, but, uh, I think we've got. All of one or two places. I know when we put the outdoor dining into effect, we had to consider Andover Pizza. I don't know how Tom's Place down the road fits into the dining establishment regulations. But he's been doing outdoor dining a long time and, uh. And I don't know what permit, if any, we've got on that. So that's, that's coming up in the near future. Planning and zoning. Desire changes to our regulations and I know we, we've talked about. We currently don't have a frontage requirement for a standard lot. We've got width. Uh, I'm under the impression that that was purely an administrative oversight when we lost that. And pretty easy to put back. And so, uh, as we go through, at some point, a. Update to our, our regulations will include that in there. The other thing that we had was, uh, you know, it was somewhat a technicality, but, uh. The property owners over on Hindi Road, uh, you know, because of the wording in our regulations was able to, uh. To go to the zoning board of appeals and, and get authorization, permission to, uh, to build a home in a flood prone district. I'm not sure that we thought that was the best idea in the world and, uh, and there's a couple of minor changes that we can make. If we choose to, that would strengthen that prohibition. And so I'll be looking at, at doing that. I started working on changes to our sign regs a while ago that got unwieldy. And so, uh, you know, uh. A bunch of stuff in there, I don't think we're, we're currently complying with. I don't know that, uh. We wanted to. I didn't necessarily want to make the regulations mirror everything that we're currently doing. But with a couple of, uh, you know. Elimination of two or three words, we can, we can make them at least constitutional in all respect. Get rid of that unconstitutionality that political signs are any different than any other signs. So I'll do that. Um, and those are the changes I added on this. I talked to Eric today about. When should we be doing our 824 referral to build, allow. The new community center saying it's consistent with our plan of conservation and development. So I put that on the list, just remember to do. And, and that was. That was all that's in there. Again, uh, you know, I encourage everybody to, to read that bulletin I sent out from Halloran Sage on. On all this stuff. I've read through it a couple of times now and some of it's actually starting to make sense. It certainly didn't on the first go-through and I know that to a large part is going to be on me to, uh. You know, bring some regulations to, uh, to y'all for, so we can discuss it and make, uh. Things as appropriate.
One, one thing I, not to interrupt you, Jeff, but one thing I did notice when I read that thing, Halloran Sage says. They want to change the accessory apartments to two spots, one for each vehicle because they. Uh, well, anybody else would think the same thing, but there's usually two people, you know. Two spouses, whatever, in, in an apartment. They want two spots for that accessory apartment.
Okay, I hadn't picked up on that. Thanks, Scott. Yep. I, I.
Which I think our, our regulations should have said that.
Yep, and we say one extra.
Right, yeah.
And again, when we, when, when we did the accessory apartment, you know, the, uh, the thought process was, uh. You know, there's, uh, an, an in-law apartment for one person is at least what I had in mind. Great, wrong, or different, but we didn't limit it to that because we figured we, we couldn't, uh, because. Eventually that person would pass away and then what's the person supposed to do with the accessory apartment? So we, we eliminated that thought, um, but it makes sense to have two parking spots for the accessory department. Um, but as other folks, you know, as you catch me saying, making commitments. To thin air that I'll go off and do something. And you should say, so are you going to put it on that list that we're going to take a look at every now and then and make sure that we've done what we do? And, uh. At some point, very soon, the board of selectmen will ask for our annual report on what we've done. And, uh, what our goals are for next year, how we did on the goals for last year. This can form the basis for doing that as well. So that's why I put this in here. Any questions on, any other questions or comments on that?
Jed, this is Leanne. Um, I inadvertently got disconnected and had to call back in. Could you just tell me really quickly? Um, two or two and a half questions about the affordable housing plan. To make a long story short, is it, if we don't do certain things on the town level. Does whatever the state passed get imposed on us unless we show that we're doing something by ourselves?
That is certainly the case for accessory apartments.
Okay.
The affordable housing plan. We are required to have an affordable housing plan that reflects the desires of the citizens of Andover. What we want, uh, how we want to beat, uh, affordable housing with a goal of 10% in the town. And we may not be the lowest percentage in the state for our town, but it's in the lowest. Two or three, if not the very bottom. So, uh, in, you know. The thought process is we may never meet the 10% goal, but at least we have a plan that tries to get there. And, and so.
Okay.
It'll be tied to funding. If we don't have a plan, we might not get all our funding.
And I said I was going to make it quick, but I'll make a two-part question. Is any of this covered by our plan of conservation and development? Um, does that count toward it?
It, uh, no. Our plan needs to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And if you look on the website, there is. a piece that can be included in the Plan of Conservation and Development, but it wasn't ready when we issued it last time. And, and so, and I forget the title, but it's Affordable Housing Study or something like that. And you know, that's 90% of the solution. And so if we don't get our grant, I will probably change the name of that from Affordable Housing Study to Affordable Housing Plan and send it in. There's not a lot of requirements right this minute about what the plan has to have. We just have to have a plan. And I'm sure that's going to change over the years where the state figures out more of what we want to put into it. But as of right now, we just have to have a plan and we currently don't.
So we have something ready, but it, we didn't include it because it wasn't really ready?
It was not ready at the time. I think that key, so our last Plan of Conservation and Development was issued in 2015. The date on this study is 2016. And, and there's also, if you look online, there is a, if you look at, under appointed committees, there's a, there's a long-term study committee. In, in 2019, I think it is, they issued a long-term study plan. And it talks about affordable housing and all that stuff in there. So there's a lot out there. We need to take, we know we don't have any affordable, we know we don't have much affordable housing. What are we doing to get there? And we've done several good things. We do have accessory apartment plan, which is a key. We do have the mixed-use floating rig thing that allows affordable housing. We made, we made the open space cluster subdivision so we could have smaller lots. And we reduced the size of a house that, that, you know, is required to be built. So we as a town, primarily through Eric's work, did a lot of good stuff to get us that direction. We just don't have a plan saying what we want to do and and how we're going to get there.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. And thanks for reiterating it. And did we do F and G yet? Or did you skip those?
On?
While I was dialing again? Pardon?
Nope. We're, we're going to move on to that right now. I'm going to close.
It sounded like maybe you were on new business when I called back in. So, okay. Thank you very much.
This, this is still Affordable Housing Plan in recent legislation. And there's a lot of it. Sorry to take so much time on that. Return to Live Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We were supposed to be meeting live in person this month. I was concerned a little bit because I wasn't able to discuss it with Jim between last meeting and this meeting. That we go sit in the room and I could not use the computer that the town might provide to get things up on the new electronic screen in the community room and do even worse of a job than I do on presenting the stuff here. So I chickened out and we went back to, to holding online meeting. I guess the other thing that happened right after we decided to meet in person is Mindy unfortunately put in her resignation and said, I live up in South Windsor. Not good to, to drive down there. And I certainly agree with that. So, so we're meeting virtually tonight. Since then, I, I thought a little bit about why I like these meetings. And while I live very close to Town Hall and it's easy for me to get there, I'm not sure that everybody does. And for instance, I know Kevin lives, you can't live too far away and still be in Andover, but he's probably got the most inconvenient drive to get here. And if we wanted to ask our engineer who lives in Lebanon to attend the meeting, certainly easier for him or Mark Branch. I don't know where Mark lives. But I know he doesn't live in Andover. And so for a lot of different reasons, I thought it was more convenient to people to, to hop on the Zoom meeting. My thoughts are that it's easier to present material in a Zoom meeting because I'm used to using my computer and I can put it up. You know, we saw Chris Bell tonight put up some stuff for us to review in. And it's sitting right in front of me where I can see it good. I'm not sure I could see it as well on that large screen that we've got in the community room. And I know the acoustics in that room aren't very good. And I can crank up my volume and not bother any of you and, and hear all that I want. So, so with that, I said, there are some nice advantages to continuing on Zoom. But I'll bring it back to the commission. I know Abby lives not too far away. I kind of like doing it in Zoom for the time being. I, I really don't know where this Delta variant of the rotavirus thing is headed. And, and this is pretty easy. If there's some big opposition, you know, the, the opposition is I don't get a chance to, to shoot the breeze with each of you folks and, and get to know you each as people, you know? I've never been able to say hi to Mindy and here she is leaving already, you know? I regret that. That's, that's not a great thing. So that's the piece that, that we're downside on. And and maybe we have, you know, when the weather's nice, an in-person meeting occasionally just, just to work on regs or something like that when we don't have other stuff going on. But I wanted to bring that back to the commission for discussion. But if there was no big opposition, I would suggest that we continue using Zoom for at least a little bit until I'm convinced, let other people work the bugs out of displaying everything. I know the town's working on how to do a hybrid meeting. Which I think is a good idea. I just don't know how to do it. And I didn't want to, to jump off on that until we didn't have the bugs worked out. So if, if somebody really got a hard spot and wants to get together, I'll say we can do that. But otherwise, I kind of like doing it this way. Any thoughts?
I've said before that I prefer in person and I still do.
And, and that was a big part of why I wanted to try it because, because of your input and the fact other people were doing that. I don't know what, I don't know how many other commissions are actually meeting in person or not yet. But, but anyhow, and I, and when I attended a Board of Education meeting, I liked the way they did it. I don't know that we over at Town Hall are geared up to do that yet. So, so that, that was my decision on that. Leanne, what's your view? You're the one I can't ever see. I don't see your expression when you're frowning at me.
Oh, well, I don't think I frowned at you too, too often if ever, but basically, I, I now have to drive around Bunker Hill Road through Coventry to go anywhere. So I don't mind doing that. But I, I could go either way. I'm fortunate that I don't have an underlying condition that makes me reluctant to go out to these kinds of things. And I'm fully vaccinated. On the other hand, the Delta variant is a concern and according to CNN, cases are going up all over the country, although they're mostly among unvaccinated people. So I'm fine with continuing to meet over Zoom.
Okay. And I think for at least, you know, for next month, I'm going to plan on meeting on Zoom. I, I recognize that there are some drawbacks to it, but there are some advantages to. Filling of vacancies. The good news is that the vacancies are, are filled. You know, we've got a full commission at this point. Steve is, I, I'm sure that when we ask you to vote on all these things and you hadn't had the benefit of sitting in on any of the discussions, let alone the chance to familiarize yourself with the regs. Hey, that's what you get. That's what you get paid the big bucks for. And so, yeah, it, there, there's a lot, there's a lot to learn and, and we'll get there. And but I certainly appreciate having Steve on the commission and look forward to, to working with him as, as I enjoy working with all you folks on this and come to the best answers the weekend. So welcome, Steve. Anything you want?
Thanks, Jeff.
Tell us about yourself, you know, in two minutes or less, kind of, you know?
Sure. I know everybody's pretty tired, long meeting, but happy to be part of the team here. My wife Charlotte and I moved to Andover two years ago. We bought, for anybody that remembers Priscilla Bronkey, we bought Priscilla's house on the lake and
Totally.
Yeah. I've never met Priscilla, but I heard, heard great stories about her. Anyway, we wanted, you know, do our part to contribute and I was a little surprised to get elected after only living here two years, but happy to serve. And I am an engineer, undergraduate degree in engineering. I haven't done any hardcore engineering in, in several years. I'm more management, helping to run an engineering services business here in Connecticut. But, you know, this kind of stuff really interests me. And I, I obviously am going to be drinking from a fire hose for a little while. So if you guys can be patient with me, I appreciate that. But I'm sure I'll come up to speed pretty fast.
So Steve is also on Alpoa and Alma. And so, you know, for a guy who's been in town all of two years, there's been a lot of volunteer time sucking them up and, and here you go. So great to have, have Steve join us. The other addition is Abby Winter, who I forget how long, who is, well, let me just say, I know Abby is another recent addition to the town of Andover, hasn't been here too long. And again, you know, is involved in just, you know, a ton of stuff to make Andover tick. So how about tell us a little bit about you there, Abby?
Yeah, absolutely. So I moved here last October and, you know, since moving here, I've dove into working at Over and Over and starting a community garden in town. If you've heard of it, please stop by. It's right behind Town Hall. As well as helping onboard here. I'm really excited to learn more about planning and zoning and land use. I currently am working in the deep monitor or water monitoring group. So I'm really interested in land use and seeing how you all contribute to this really interesting piece of land we have here in Andover.
And, and so Abby, you're a graduate student over at UConn?
Yes. Yeah. So I'm studying environmental science. Environmental science and energy.
Yep. So it, you know, especially for the inland wetlands, folks, that, that works out. That's right up Abby's alley, but you know, she is certainly very passionate about all this stuff that we're doing and very nice to, to have her here.
Thank you.
Susan, Susan England couldn't join us. She was, other obligations tonight, but she went from being, you know, the, the full-time commission member to an alternate. So we've got, you know, the three alternates. Kevin, Anne and Susan now and life is good. We're, we're a full house. So that, that is just great. Oh, I guess we've got minutes to approve from the last time. And, and so with that, I can only say thank you, Mindy, for the fantastic job you've, you've done throughout your tenure here on, on writing the minutes. I will ask, well, I guess first I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the June 21st meeting.
I moved to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Anne. Looking for a second. Sooner we second, sooner we get to go.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Any comments on the minutes? Any discussion? And I thought, again, I thought they were very well done, Mindy. I'll embarrass myself by two or three typos on page three, paragraph five B under the second line, applicants, and it should be an, and, a, and. And at the bottom of that page, third paragraph up from the bottom, second line, coverage needs the E at the end of the word there. And in the last little paragraph there, if the extension is granted instead of ingranted. So, and then on the very last page, at the top there on the special meeting sidewalk of June 1st, it's got, we, we moved to approve the meeting minutes as presented. And it says Scott Person moved, should be Scott Person seconded. And so, any other comments on the minutes? Hearing none, call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Oh, I just, I just saw something. Sorry. Oh. Um, under, sorry, now I'm trying to backtrack. Something minor. Under 5D. Discussion action about the dog kennel.
Yep.
The second paragraph, SBB stated that operates as a, as a does dog, doggy daycare. Probably just meant to say as a doggy daycare.
5D.
Sorry. It's no big deal. I'm trying to do this quickly.
Yep. Nope. I've got you. So on page five, item 5D, second paragraph. Scott BB stated that he operates as a doggy daycare. So we need to add the word he and eliminate the word does.
I think so.
Yep. Nope. Good comment, Leanne. So we will add that to
Again.
To our list of changes. I will go back and vote one more time, starting from the top. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Bye.
Steve?
Well, since I didn't attend the meeting, can I just abstain?
You can. Yep.
Thank you.
And I vote aye as well. So the motion passes 401 with Steve Nelson abstaining. Okay. Agent Halsey, any correspondence or administrative reports?
Not much to report. I, I have been working limited hours the last month. I do have a couple of enforcement actions that I have put on, put on hold, hopefully moving forward on at this time. Lot of activity given whatever reason, backlog of permits, working through them. Other than that, I have nothing new to report.
Okay. Any questions for our zoning agent? Hearing none, move on to commission discussion miscellaneous.
Ed, could you just quickly go over Return to Live Planning and Zoning Commission? I, I got kicked out again tonight, right, right when you were talking about that.
Yep. So at least for the next meeting, we're going to do another Zoom. at least for the next meeting, we're going to do another Zoom. And, and my rationale for that is it is so convenient to have people pop in who maybe don't live right next door to Town Hall, whether it be the lawyer or engineer or even, you know, applicants and their engineers and that sort of thing. You know, so, so there's the ease of that. I like the ease of presenting the materials electronically on the screen that's right in front of everybody. And I also think the acoustics are better. We're, we're able to understand more clearly than we can in the community room. The only downside is that I don't, we, we don't get a chance to really meet each other as people, which I think is very important. And with technology today, that's, that's what's driving us away from getting to know who our neighbors are. And I think there is a big detriment to that. But for the time being with I think the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. And until I get comfortable with the technology over there in the community center and how that's going to work, I would like to continue to do a virtual meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion miscellaneous thoughts? Okay. Moving on to the public comment. I, I'm sure that we don't have any, any public remaining here. Very good. And so before I get a motion to approve, Abby, you now see what your challenge is ahead. Take all this discussion and, and try to distill it somehow. How Ian has done that so well, I don't know. But get the secret from her. Not Anne, Mindy. Anne just happens to be sitting in the little box right next to you as I look it up there. Mindy has done an exceptional job and I know you'll do yeah, just as well. But it, it, there's got to be a trick in there and I don't know what the trick is. So get it from Mindy before she's gone. And welcome to, to Abby and Steve. At this point, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn meeting.
Thank you, Anne. Any second.
Leanne, I'll second.
Thank you, Leanne. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody, and good night. And I appreciate all the work that all of you do to support the commission. I enjoy working with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.